I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will a clerk please call the roll?
Hilberg.
Here.
Colazar. Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coyne.
Here. Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move to have the minutes of the April 9, 2012 regular meeting as submitted by the clerk approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Will a clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee, we met this evening prior to the council meeting and had some good discussion on several of the items on this agenda for this council meeting and next council meeting. Our next Finance Committee meeting will be in two weeks from today. Health, Safety and Sanitation. Mr. Rose is not here today. Public Properties. Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Thank you. Special Legislation. Mr. Lamb.
No. No report.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No reports tonight.
And Water and Utilities Committee. Mark Colazar is on that and he is not here this evening either. Request for Council Action. For the Finance Committee, we have several items. We have 1273 Accounts Payable Clerk Retirement, Amending Section 3104(c), 1274 Formation of CIC, Medina City Development Corporation, 1275 Review of Quote of Regulations for Medina City Development Corporation, 1276 ODOT Agreement, Westmouth Road Reconstruction Project, 1277 Accepting Easements for Guilford Boulevard Storm Sewer Project, 1278 East Smith Road to Smoke Rise Waterline Wheeling Lake Area Railway Easements, 1279 New Mobile Data Terminals for Police Cruisers and Fire, and 1280 Going Out of Business Sales, Chapter 705. Reports of Municipal Officers. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Saturday, April 21, we had the big day of serving and over 500 people showed up to take part, some from as far away as mid-Pennsylvania and out of state in addition to that. They, because it was raining, they were not able to do some of the painting, but were able to put mulch and weed in basically all of the city parks, all of the school properties. Weed had picked up trash and I had a number of the seniors that were involved, senior citizens that had work done. In fact, one of them came to the wrap-up ceremony at the city garage and was very emotional about how with his incapacitation, how nice it was to see the yard the way he used to be able to keep it himself and how terrible he feels about looking out the window and not being able to pick up the sticks or weed the flower beds and now these volunteers have it back to the way that he likes it to be and he thanked the group for that. Secondly, Rand McNally and USA Today are looking for the best small hometown and the best place in America. We've nominated the city for the best small hometown and the Uptown Square for the best place and we're asking residents to go on and vote for Medina. If you go to the city website, there are links for the best small hometown. It's www.bestoftheroad.com/town and www.bestoftheroad.complace. And if you choose Medina and vote, then the ones getting the highest votes generally are the ones selected. There's going to be a basketball game on Saturday, this coming Saturday, April 28 at 7:00 PM with the Harlem Wizards, which is a group from the Harlem Globe Trotters, playing some. Adam Frederick from the County Commissioner's Office, Randy Stepp, our Superintendent of the Schools. They gave me a shirt. I'm not much of a basketball player, but somehow I'm on the team. The tickets are available. They're $8 in advance and $10 at the door. If people are interested, the Harlem Wizards will also be up on the square for photos from noon to 1:00 that same day. So if anybody would like to come up and get your picture taken with them, they're pretty impressive. We played them, or they beat us two years ago and they're coming back for round two. Medina Community Band is having their spring concert Sunday, April 29 at 2:00 PM. They're moving from the center stage at the high school to the Performing Arts Center next to our rec center. It's a free event. There's no tickets, no charge and anybody interested in the band, in particular those who come up and hear them on the square, are welcome to attend. The National Day of Prayer events is coming up Thursday, May 3. The first event is the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast from 7:00 to 8:30. The guest speaker will be County Commissioner Adam Frederick. Tickets are required for that. They're available at my office and most of the local churches. All the other events are free. There's a noon prayer service on the square, an evening prayer service at the New Heartland Community Church at 3400 Weymouth Road. That's from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. And then they did a new addition this year for those that are really busy. They have a drive-through prayer at the Cups Cafe, 126 North Court Street from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And you drive in in your car, they give you a cup of coffee, they pray for you and you drive back out. Drive-through prayer. There you go. Okay. Monday, May 7, Medina County Treasurer John Burke will launch the 11th Year for Fix-It Fund Home Improvement Loan Program. Interest rates are 3% below the normal bank rates for repairs or home improvements. The restrictions are that the home value must be less than $200,000, not including land. There are some limitations. They won't pay for like pools, hot tubs, unattached garages or sheds. It's a five-year loan from $1,500 to a maximum of $50,000. There's no income level required. You must be current on your real estate taxes and funds are first come, first served. Applications will be available after May 7 at the following banks. Huntington Bank, Key Bank and US Bank. And if you have questions, you're welcome to call John Burke at his office, 725-9746. And last but not least, I'd like to ask Sergeant First Class Gregory Habrat from our Ohio National Guard to approach the podium for a flag presentation.
My name is Sergeant First Class Greg Habrat. I'm currently home on leave from a deployment to Afghanistan and I have a presentation that I'd like to make this evening. Mayor Hanwell, City Council, Department Heads and to the citizens of Medina. Task Force Rock, Operation Enduring Freedom. Let it be known and certified that on the 20th day of December 2011, this flag was proudly flown over Camp Dubs in Kabul, Afghanistan during Operation Enduring Freedom 2011-2012. This flag is presented to the city and people of Medina in honor of their support of Medina's own Ohio Army National Guard and the United States of America. Signed, Gregory A. Habrat, Sergeant First Class, S4 Senior Logistics Sergeant for Task Force Rock. And let it also be noted that this flag not only is flown above Camp Dubs, but it has traveled with me through the cities, towns, countryside, mountains, and has been amongst the Afghan people and this evening I proudly present it to you. Mayor Hanwell, would you accept?
We'll post this flag here at City Hall for the foreseeable future and then we'll take it back down and display it proudly in a case. We appreciate your service and stay safe till you return. Yes, sir.
Yes, and on behalf of council, we appreciate your service to our country and we're grateful to have the flag to show in our case at City Hall. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Durham, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple things. The budget process is underway for all of the budgets except for the enterprise funds that we've already done and the general fund, which we do later in the year. Passed out the packets to all the department heads and they're working on those and we're handling those questions that they have. I also wanted to take just a minute to thank the Parks Department and the Forester on behalf of myself and the Medina Kiwanis Club. We have a project where we pass out trees to all the city's third graders. I was part of that a couple of weeks ago, getting those out and delivered. And the Parks Department and the Forester were nice enough to help our club with that project and give us space to handle those deliveries. So, thank you.
Thank you. Lieutenant Brooke Beckler, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. On April 28, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the Medina Hospital in cooperation with the Medina County Drug Task Force and the Medina County Drug Abuse Commission is hosting a Drug Takeback Day. You are encouraged to check your medicine cabinets for any drugs, prescription or other drugs you no longer can use and bring them in. This will be at Medina Hospital. They will also accept street drugs and other illicit drugs with no questions asked. Officers will be there to receive the drugs and they'll be taken by the Medina County Drug Task Force to DEA site for destruction. Throughout the year, drug drop-off boxes are located at Monville Township Police Department, Medina Township Police Department and the Medina County Sheriff's Office for those who can't make it on Saturday, the 28th. Additionally, since April 13 of this year, the Medina City School District, primarily Claggett Middle School and the high school, have received several threats. These threats have spread as rumors throughout the community adversely affecting the operations of the schools. Our officers, working with the school staff, have continuously been investigating the source of these threats and rumors. Late this afternoon, two 18-year-old high school students were arrested and charged and in connection with some of these threats. Both of these students were charged with inducing panic at a school, which is a felony of the second degree. The case will be presented to the grand jury for additional charges. This investigation will continue and any other threats and appropriate charges will be filed as those subjects are discovered. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rice, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Tuesday, April 17, I am happy to announce that Times Squared finally opened. We celebrated their grand opening and ribbon cutting. They moved from North Court Street over to Westmouth Road with the entrance off of South Court. It was a very well-attended event. Everybody seems pretty excited to have them down there closer to the square and I want to thank all the members of council that were able to attend and show their support for this new business. And that's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Haning, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to let the council and the public provide a brief update on our brownfield grant. The coalition between the city, the four adjacent townships and the village of Shipewa Lake is actively starting our brownfield assessment program. We will be looking to find and prioritize potential sites that may be in need of environmental assessment. These would be commercial or industrial properties which may be vacant or underutilized and in need of some environmental assessment work. We are anticipating a public open house on May 21. We will have a press release and additional details to come later this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item. You'll be voting on the fire contract with Monville, revoting on it here a little bit later. And I just want you to know that the pumper that was included in that contract has been ordered and we're anticipating about an October-November delivery date for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick things. The MCRC, we'd like to thank all the patrons who came out for the Just Kids Stuff Garage Sale Saturday, April 14 and the Medina Early Childhood PTA for the partnering with us on the event. Turned out to be a really good event for everybody. The new MCRC Spring/Summer brochure is currently available. If you do not receive one in your Saturday, April 14 post, we do have them available at the MCRC and on our website at www.madinarec.org. I also wanted to thank the Post for working with us on these brochures and look forward to working with them on the future. Our next scheduled advisory board meeting is Thursday, May 17 at the rec center at 7:30 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vogel, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight I would like to focus on Medina's continuing efforts to serve our citizens more efficiently. The Medina City Building Department has always strived for quick responses to permit requests and I am now pleased to announce a focused commitment to provide many types of permit approvals over the counter and next day. Our over-the-counter permits include electrical service upgrades, replacements of heating, ventilating and air conditioning equipment, window and door replacements with no structural change, basement waterproofing and re-roofing. And our next-day permits include fences, sheds and signs not located in an area requiring design review by the planning commission. So be assured that over-the-counter permits will be issued with little or no wait and that often we can issue the next-day permits while you wait if staffing permits. Please contact the Medina City Building Department for any questions regarding these same-day permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Update on some of our active projects. Our Lake Road project, we have issued a notice to proceed to our contractor. We expect him to start work within the next two weeks. The initial phase will be the underground work, the storm sewers and waterline. We are preparing a communication with all the businesses on Lake Road. Encourage anyone that has any questions to give us a call. Our South Court Sturbridge Intersection project is rapidly coming to completion. We have a couple more weeks of pavement work out there and then the project should be completed. We do recognize the traffic congestion that's posed by this project and appreciate everyone's patience and cooperation. As I said, a couple more weeks and we should be completed. Our Commerce Drive Extension, we began pavement preparations today. Expect to have concrete placed there over the next week or two and hope to be able to open the road here within about four or five weeks. And lastly, just a note about our Roscoe-Ewing Trail. We are installing a water line, a water main between Smith Road and Smoke Rise and Concord. Part of this goes through the existing trail, Roscoe-Ewing. The trail is closed right at the work zone. It is open either side of that. This will last for a couple of weeks and then the trail will be reconstructed and open to the public again. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, Parks and Recreation Director.
Mr. President, thank you. This was a very busy weekend filled with the Bugattaway Lacrosse Tournament at the high school and for the first time at Huffman-Cunningham Complex. There was dance competition and as the mayor mentioned, the big day of serving. I was fortunate enough to be a part of the Saturday with our youth at the big day of serving where they went to our parks. I would be remiss if I did not mention our local church pastors who came together and made this event the success it was. What I took from this experience was the willingness of our youth to help others and our parks to make us a better community. Also, this past Saturday, we had either some individuals or a group post signs on the square without our knowledge. The signs were thumbtacked to the trees and taped to the gazebo. No damage was incurred, however, I wanted to inform the public that there is a correct way to do this and to always contact the mayor's office to get approval and/or a permit for the Uptown Park use. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Canwell, Service Director, Representative.
Thank you. I'm sure over the past several months, many of you have noticed the orange barrels that have been around the historic district covering where lights used to be. I'm happy to report tonight that all eight of those luminaires have been replaced and are working. That is in our historic district. The Water Department will begin their annual hydrant flushing in May. Notification on their location of where they're at will be available on our website, which is www.madinaoh.org and it will be under the Service Department. But if you have any questions, you can call our Service Department at 3307-229081. Thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of Mayor's appointments. We have Leslie Travers, I think, Historic Preservation Board, term expiring 12/31/15 and Earl Harris, Board of Zoning Appeals, alternate, term expiring 12/31/15.
Move to approve the Mayor's appointments.
Second.
Any discussion on the Mayor's appointments? Will a clerk please call the roll on the Mayor's appointments?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Confirmation of council appointments. With the exiting of our previous Ward 1 Council Representative Andrea Brudell Ware, we have made subsequent appointments to various committees. We have Bill Lamb is now the Chairman of the Special Legislation Committee, Brian Hilberg, the member of Public Properties Committee. Brian Hilberg is also the member of the ad hoc committees of Cable Access for a term expiring 12/31/12, CRA Housing with a term expiring 12/31/12, Fireman's Dependence Board, term expiring 12/31/14 and Tax Extensive Review Council, term expiring 12/31/12.
Move to approve council appointments.
We have one other addition that was not listed on the appointments. We have Brian Hilberg is also a member of the Water and Utilities Committee. Do I have a motion, was amended?
I amend the motion to include the Waters and Utility Committee appointment.
Second with the amendment.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Well, I guess we're just doing a confirmation with the amendment to the committees. Would the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of council appointments?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Notices, Communications and Petitions. We have one. It's a new D1 liquor permit for Salem Barbecue LLC doing business as Dicky's Barbecue Pit at 960 North Court Street.
Move now to object.
Second.
Any discussion? Will a clerk please call the roll?
Coyne.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Unfinished business? We have none. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so that it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a voter of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council? Yes.
Mr. President and Council, I am Pat Walker, 523 East Friendship Street in Ward 2 Medina. I am also a businessperson in the city and I understand the needs of the city as far as economic development. It is very important for this city and any other city and I appreciate the efforts that council is making in that regard, the mayor is making in that regard and also our economic director, Ms. Rice, is doing in that regard. I also appreciate the fact that Councilman Lamb, Coyne, Simpson and Colazar have taken time to take my calls concerning the Community Improvement Project and I also thank council for listening to my comments at the finance meeting that preceded this council meeting. I have some concerns and I appreciate that council has looked at the issue of council control for the Community Improvement Corporation. The issue on the Community Improvement Corporation is that taxpayer money is appropriated under this to the Community Improvement Corporation or CIC. And then the CIC has certain powers that they can use in order to use the taxpayers' money of the city. Fortunately, council appears to be looking at the issue of council control of the CIC, which I think is very important, which is not present in the ordinance that was presented as part of the agenda tonight that I understand that will be withdrawn. However, there are other concerns concerning the CIC. Its mischief cloaked in economic development. I understand that it's important for the city to develop properties that may be blighted or there are other problems with the property. However, the CIC powers are much greater than that. For instance, under the CIC, taxpayer money can be appropriated by council to the CIC and then the CIC can use that money to do an asset purchase of a business. I do not believe that this is an appropriate power to be used over taxpayer money. Also, the CIC can make a loan to an individual. The only requirements are that the loan be for civic development, whatever that is, and the person has to have been rejected by a commercial bank for that loan. This does not appear to be appropriate purpose for taxpayer money. Another real important issue here is that it appears that this is being considered in order to redevelop property, which obviously would include the construction work on these properties. If construction work is done by the city, in most cases, the city has to pay prevailing wage. But under the CIC, the CIC does not have to pay prevailing wage. It is important for taxpayer money when they are used for projects that the workers are paid a living wage. This helps the city because the workers, if they have sufficient money, they can go out and support the businesses in the city with their wages. Also, this is touted as a way that property can be developed without competitive bidding. When taxpayer money is involved, competitive bidding is important. I urge council to look at this issue again and to issue and request that council narrow the powers of the CIC and that they include in the CIC a provision for prevailing wage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker, and we do appreciate your comments and input this earlier today at the Finance Committee meeting. You had well-thought-out arguments and points of discussion that with all your input, you know, we may not have addressed all of them and we appreciate your time and effort on behalf of the citizens and helping us along with the formation of the CIC. We appreciate that. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jackie Smith and I live at 311 Valley Drive. I have a concern with the CIC because John Coyne is being proposed as a trustee for the CIC. He is a partner in the law firm of Ritzel and Andrus, making this, in my opinion, a clear conflict of interest.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council? Mr. Smith?
Thank you. My name is Jay Smith. I reside at 715 Minor Drive Apartment C9. Mr. President and members of the City Council, I too would just like to address some of the concerns I have with the Community Improvement Corporation. I think there are many reasons that I oppose the CIC and just a few of those would be that it ignores the safeguards of competitive bidding and prevailing wage. Also, I believe that the CIC will have less transparency and accountability than city council actions would. And I also believe that the conflict of interest with the law firm that John Coyne works at is, I don't think that should happen. I don't think that law firm should be working on this, as well as I do not believe that if they are, that you should not be one of the trustees appointed to the CIC.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wish to address council? Sir?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of Medina Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ken Kluppl and I have the distinct privilege tonight to be representing the Ohio Government Finance Officers Association of which one of our board members is Mr. Durham. And I'm here to present, Mr. Durham and the Medina City with the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting as presented by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. If I can just describe this certificate and the award. It is one of 315 given throughout the state of Ohio. That includes all the cities, the townships, the villages. townships, the villages, the special purpose governments, the school districts. So out of a couple thousand governments in the city of Ohio, in the state of Ohio, the city of Medina is one of 314 recipients of this. And it represents a commitment to excellence and a transparency in the financial statements. As the GFOA indicates, it is the highest accounting award that a government can have, and I'm very pleased that the highest standards in government accounting has been accomplished for the third year in a row by the city of Medina, and it is truly my privilege to present this to Mr. Durham, the mayor, and the council of the city of Medina. It's a great achievement for the city of Medina.
Thank you. I think you're supposed to face the other way there.
Oh, I'm going around wide.
Thanks again, and congratulations, Keith.
Did your dad get a picture?
Okay, good. Anybody else wishes to address council? Yes, sir.
Hello. My name's Jeff Teraskey. I live at 340 Halifax Lane in Medina. I've had a couple email correspondence with Mr. Rose, and I think Mr. Durham, Mr. Hannan were addressing them. I'm having a tax issue. I'm employed as a parole officer for the state of Ohio. Since January 1st, 2006, I covered Medina County, mostly the city of Medina. My employer, the state of Ohio, falsifies my tax returns every year, and with every pay. They indicate I'm working out of a headquarters office in Elyria. Coming to you, I guess, is I believe the city's contract with the Central Collection Agency is up for renew pretty soon. I mean, what the state's doing, I believe, is actually a criminal offense. I mean, I understand some different viewpoints on that, but at least as far as money is being owed to the city of Medina, the Central Collection Agency is refusing to collect monies owed to the city by parole officers that are employed in the city. I paid my taxes as a local resident, then received a small credit, but there are also other officers that do not live in Medina that should be paying as well, and nobody's been able to give me any sort of clear answer whatsoever from the Central Collection Agency as why they refuse to honor the contractual obligation to collect monies owed to the city. I just asked maybe somebody from the city to contact on my behalf, or consider not renewing any contract with CCA in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teraskey. I believe the law director was involved in that. I think it's a legal issue related to the obligation and our ability to collect those taxes, and if we can, if we have a right to, or, and I think that was looked into, and I'm not sure legally if we have the ability, and it may be a quirk in the law, but we would gladly like to collect that, but if we're not able to, under the Ohio Vice Code, I don't know if that prohibits us tonight, and I guess I have to, the law director's not here this evening, but I would defer to him on that answer. But we do understand your concern, and I think we've looked into it, and we'll probably look into it a little bit more to make sure that that's correct, but I believe that was the law director's review of the information and review of the Ohio Vice Code of our ability to do that. Do you have a follow-up on that?
Yeah, since speaking with Mr. Lanier, actually, is the one I was in conversation with. I don't know if it would, I'm sure he had a conversation with the director, but I mean, I have continued to research it, and every answer is that I personally may pursue legal action if I want to. So, I mean, it's, there is applicable sections in the Ohio Vice Code where cities can take action against that, and it certainly is, I, no one's explained to why if me, myself as a citizen, would be able to do it, why couldn't the representing authority for the city, on behalf of a Medina resident, take that? And that was never answered or directed to me.
I appreciate, I understand, and I guess I have to defer to the law director since this is his purview to make that determination, but I appreciate your time and your concerns, and I'll speak with the law director about that. But I appreciate it. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address council? Okay. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 77-12, an ordinance amending ordinance number 182-11 passed December 12, 2011, relative to the agreement between the city of Medina and Mountville Township relative to providing fire protection for the township.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, and I moved to add it at this time.
Second with the emergency clause.
Mayor or chief painter wishes to address this? Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was originally passed, I believe, last September by you, and since then, Mountville Township has decided they want to own the fire truck that was included in that contract, so they have gone ahead and ordered that, and the emergency clause is requested because we have been working without a contract since December 31st. Thank you.
Thank you. And the emergency clause is requested because of the contract. I believe we all reviewed the contract, and it's, I believe it's for a five-year term, starting out with increases in the last, the final two years as far as the services being provided to the township. Is there any else questions regarding the ordinance? Would a clerk please call the role on the emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Would a clerk please call the role on the ordinance?
Hilberg?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance 77-12 passes, 5-0.
Ordinance 78-12, an ordinance amending section 13301 of the codified ordinances of the city of Medina, Ohio, relative to association memberships.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. Hannan, is this you?
I apologize. This one is related to the ICI, which is a sustainable infrastructure program, and the city wishes to pursue membership. It isn't binding to specific goals, but will help us to certify an employee to work on the sustainable infrastructure, which is like a lead program for infrastructure, and help us leverage additional incentives for future grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Would a clerk please call the role on the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 78-12 passes, 5-0.
Ordinance 79-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Delta Airport Consultants to complete design and bidding services for the municipal airport above-ground aviation fuel storage tank pad.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. Patton?
Thank you. The city has decided to install jet fuel, jet A fuel at our city airport. This is an agreement between the consultant, Delta Airport, that will design that jet fuel station. This includes design and bidding services, and also construction phase monitoring services as well.
Thank you. As everybody recalls, this is part of a process by which we're improving the Medina Municipal Airport, and we're going to enter into an agreement with the operator of the airport, whereby the money spent on the aviation fuel storage tank pad and the tank itself will be reimbursed through the sales of the fuel to the, I guess, end users, and we will get a portion of that from the operator to help pay for, and hopefully totally pay for, the initial capital outlay that the city is making for these improvements. And this is one piece of the total project to move forward. Does anybody have any questions or discussion? Would a clerk please call the role on the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 79-12 passes, 5-0.
We have two additional ordinances to be added. This evening, we have ordinance 80-12 and ordinance 82-12.
Move that the two ordinances be added to the agenda?
Second.
Would a clerk please call the role on adding ordinance 80-12 and 82-12?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Ordinance 80-12, an ordinance amending section 3104(c) of the salaries and benefits code of the city of Medina, Ohio, relative to special regulations for training employees.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, and I moved to add it at this time.
Second with the emergency clause.
Any discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. The emergency clause is requested because of the timing of the pending retirement of a current employee. The pay code authorizes the city to have two employees in one position for a four-week period for training the incoming employee before the outgoing employee departs service with the city. What this ordinance will do is amend that so that if the outgoing employee uses vacation or other compensated absence time at the end of their tenure, that the four weeks of training will be before that absence begins.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the role on the emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would a clerk please call the role on the ordinance?
Hilberg?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance 80-12 passes, 5-0.
As you would know, ordinance 81-12, which deals with the CIC formation, has been tabled until the next council meeting, based upon the discussions we had in the Finance Committee meeting earlier requesting modifications, both to the articles of incorporation and also modifications to the code of regulations or bylaws. The next ordinance we have is ordinance 82-12, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 12 Dell laptop, Dell Latitude laptop from Dell for the Police Department, Cruisers, and Fire Department.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, and I moved to add it at this time.
Second with the emergency clause.
Any discussion on the emergency clause or the ordinance? Lieutenant Brooke Beckler?
Yes. This is to replace our current Panasonic mobile data terminals that are approximately seven years old. They are an upgrade in an operating system, and with our, changing in our software program, that we found out that requires a dual-core processor versus the single processors that they currently have. We're also requesting the emergency clause because of current connectivity problems that we're having and the speed of transmissions that we're having.
Thank you. And I believe in the Finance Committee meeting, we made a modification to this ordinance, changing the current amount of approximately $46,000 to increase that amount to, not to exceed $50,000, just in case there was additional costs associated with shipping and handling of those laptops.
Yes, sir.
So I'll entertain a motion to amend the current ordinance to modify the amount from approximately $46,000 to not to exceed $50,000.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Would a clerk please call the role on the amendment?
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Any further discussion on the emergency clause? Would a clerk please call the role on the emergency clause?
Hilberg?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
And finally, any further discussion on the ordinance? Would a clerk please call the role on the ordinance?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 82-12 passes, 5-0 as amended.
Council comments? I have a few. First, I'd like to remind everyone, on May 7th, Monday, May 7th, the Ward 4 meeting will take place for the members of council and the members of Ward 4 or any other ward that wishes to attend, at the AI Root Middle School at 7:00 p.m., and it'll be located in the band room. Again, that's May 7th, the Ward 4 meeting at 7:00 p.m. in the band room at the AI Root Middle School. Additionally, our condolences go out to Mr. Hilberg. His mother passed away this past week, and our prayers are with you, and we're glad you could make it this evening, and we wish you the best.
Thank you.
Any further council comments? Meeting adjourned.